Call the meeting to order. Um, we coming? Yeah, okay. Good. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The small copper, the handle can go up.
Handle will blow. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aaron.
Aaron. Okay.
You've got to move yourself, Karen. There.
We go on this. Can we, can I make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda and move the great grant of the eight up on our agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda and move the grant up. A second.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, gentlemen.
When do the minutes approval first?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Thank you, Paul. Do I hear? Motion to approve the minutes of one twenty-seven twenty-five.
Motion to approve them.
Your second. Any comments or questions by the board on the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Paul. Okay.
All right. Well, thanks for having us. I'm Evan Fitzgerald from Fitzgerald Environmental. My colleague Jordan Duffy. So. The last time we were with you, it was November. I met with you virtually, and that meeting didn't go quite as expected. We had a number of interruptions from the the Zoom, uh, Zoom bomber there.
Was I away? I must be.
So honestly, it was a bit hard for me in that situation to, you know, gauge the the board's, um, input and, you know, what have you. So glad we're here in person tonight to um, go over the work that we've done since and address some of the questions and comments that you had in the last meeting. So, um, just to recap, this is, um, the grant that the town got, uh, BRIC grant from Vermont Emergency Management. BRIC stands for Building Resilient Infrastructure Needings. And this grant is about exploring flood mitigation alternatives at the D and H rail crossing. And specifically exploring alternatives that would reduce flooding, um, upstream, given, you know, given the history of the bridge. So, uh, when we last met, we had kind of given you some initial ideas of what we were thinking about the alternatives, but we hadn't actually, you know, dived into the details of it and, and done a lot of the hydraulics yet. Um, so what we've done since, based on some of your comments and, and questions and some of the other alternatives that you asked us to explore, um, we've done a lot of work actually with the hydraulics modeling and calculations and had some discussions with V-Trans as well. Of course, who's a key stakeholder in this because, um, they, they own and maintain the rail, rail trail. Um, and we've come up with the list that you're looking at here. Um, this alternative summary, um, that you have in your hand, as well as a map that shows, um, where these different alternatives are laid out. So, um, before we get to that table, I wanted to, um, I've got a presentation up here on the screen. I wanted to just walk you guys through it. Everybody on line can see as well. Um, so you brought this, um, to the attention of the town, the select board did, uh, based on the historical knowledge that you have, that there were two bays to this bridge, uh, before the nineteen seventies. So this is a nineteen sixty-two aerial photo. And you can see it's annotated there to, to show north abutment, center pier, south abutment. So there were two hydraulic openings in this bridge, although the north opening passed the main channel and presumably the south opening passed flood flows when the floodplain filled out, filled up. And, uh, you know, the, the northern bay, if you will, you know, the, um, capacity got exceeded. There was extra room to pass through the south. Well, in nineteen seventy-five, the railroad applied for permission from the state to fill that southern bay. We don't, maybe some of you actually know why, um, Jordan and I were talking about this on our drive down. You know, why did the railroad want to do that? Perhaps the bridge had reached its, you know, end of life. Yep. And so instead of, uh, replacing two spans, it was obviously more economical for them to replace just the one to the north. So, um, after a bunch of back and forth between, um, the rail and the state and even some input from the town, the state granted permission, uh, for the railroad to fill that southern bay. That was in nineteen seventy-five. Um, and this, you know, what I drew on here is, uh, in the dash blue, blue line, the Polley River since that time has accumulated a lot of sediment at that opening on the upstream side, um, which if we can get into understanding why, but it's pretty, I think, common sense for many of you. You close it off, you constrict the flow. The, uh, the river has less energy and power to move that sediment through. And so it started depositing upstream of, of the bridge opening, and then it kind of meandered its way around that deposit. That's what that dash blue, uh, line is. So now, you know, if we look ahead to today, um, we can see the blue line has, um, you know, a big meander to the north, um, almost an oxbow, and then, um, a, you can see the remnants of the, the main channel there going straight through. Um, I wanted to put this slide up because you had asked whether, um, someone had mentioned that there's a sewer line, um, out there across country line, and whether that would have any, um, conflict with the, the alternatives that we were discussing. And so I, I wanted to throw this on here, and it doesn't. Um, it's just off the north and, um, perhaps an overflow culvert alternative that we're considering, considering, uh, just to the north would be very close to the sort of might move to take into consideration the proximity. But generally speaking, um, it's not in the way of, um, the bigger earth moving, uh, ideas that we have.
So, so I'm sorry, is that line being used now?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Yeah. Never knew.
That's the line I was asking about earlier.
That goes through the house.
No, that's it?
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, it's
Should be.
It's been. That comes, that's, that's, um, all the, all the storm drain, isn't it?
No, that's
That's the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, we, actually, when we were working on projects
It comes right by my house.
Over at the garage, we, we got some record drawings of the, the depth of that line over by the garage. There's a manhole in between the garage and Polley River. So I know, I know it went from the garage, you know, to the west. I didn't realize it, it crossed all of this land.
That's close to the houses and to the river overflow right there.
Yeah.
Isn't that, isn't this is where, there's a house here, but is this where all the ice chunks of the river flow is?
That's where the ice jams are. That's Route thirty-one bridge right there. Route thirty-one bridge is up here. This is Val's house. And, and then this is the ice jam.
The, yeah, jams up.
And with the ice this year, yeah, I'm a, I'm afraid we're, we're gonna be in some, some trouble.
Well, that was another comment that you all mentioned as a board, the ice, ice jam flooding, debris jam flooding that we've since accounted for in our calculations.
Wait until after he's done and we'll, we'll get into the questions.
No questions.
Brain rotation for the amount to know which direction where it was not aware.
Yeah, all of these plans we're gonna show you.
Route thirty-one bridge is here. Patty, your house was, oh, right there.
Sure, he was asking where his house was.
Yeah.
Her back pen, it's in the middle of the river.
Yeah.
This is an existing conditions plan that shows some of the FEMA floodplain mapping, uh, that we, that's available for this area. So again, cursor, here's the rail crossing. Cursor's on it here. Um, here's Grove Street. And these red lines are the cross-sections, uh, from the FEMA study. So this is where they did their hydraulic calculations and measured what we call the base flood elevation. Um, it, it is a detailed study, but it's pretty outdated. But what it shows, you can see the gray shaded areas going all the way down to the south in between the rail and, uh, thirty-one does show flooding off to the south as, as those floodwaters basically back up behind this, um, constricted opening and you know, flood out on, on either side to the east of. Um, we did quite a bit of, um, survey, topographic, and what we call bathymetric survey, survey of the river bottom this past summer, um, and this is a plan showing, uh, some of the results of that work specifically around, um, the bridge. So we spent a lot of time characterizing topography and, and river bottom, um, here around the bridge, because obviously this is the focus of the study. We also did, um, do topo shots going up the river um, towards thirty-one and downstream as well. And then, uh, for this level of study where we're looking at alternatives and concepts, you know, um, we have sufficient data from that survey. We also rely on what we call YDR data, which is, um,
Yeah.
data that's flown from a plane, which we find typically to be in pretty good alignment with the survey data that, that we collected. So we feathered our data in with that information.
So Devin, is that where the river rerouted itself?
Correct.
Up there?
Yep.
And there's a little island in the middle?
I'll just point out, this is where the, that southern bay was. In fact, there's a, the old abutment is visible. Um, so the river used to go straight through like this and used to have this other opening here to shoot through in times of overflow. And now, you know, it bends around, the main flow kind of bends around like this. Although when we were out there, it was, it was split flow. I would say the, um, this past summer, the main base flow was going through this channel. The original channel.
Yeah, changed just this summer. That was really dry and it went that way quite hard for a number of years.
And, um, you know, these are renderings, just, um, this doesn't necessarily show the extent of all the logs, because there is a log jam right here at that inlet, uh, that's making, making this channel narrower. Okay, so, um, that's a little background on, on existing conditions. Now, um, because that we know that this is a constriction for the amount of flood flow that comes through, um, the Polley River, for example, in a hundred-year flood, there's about nine thousand cubic feet per second estimated to come down the Polley. And that single bridge opening just is not enough to handle that, which is why we see the, the symptoms that we see both in what we call clear flow hydraulics, you know, water without debris and, and ice. And of course, as you pointed out, you know, during those times when the flows may not be as, as heavy or high as a hundred-year flood, a five or a ten-year flood, or even something smaller, but carrying that amount of ice can have the flood severity of, of a much bigger flood, um, you know, with that jamming. So with that in mind, we were looking for ways to create more conveyance, create more space through which those floodwaters could get from east to west and therefore relieve some of that, both that ponding that, um, moves upstream toward that neighborhood, um, you know, along, uh, just, just up by the thirty-one bridge, as well as to the south, another, you know, there's kind of a, a break in with not as many homes and a farm, and then, um, south of there, another, you know, s- small neighborhood of homes that get flooded south as well. Um, so the alternatives we were looking at were, um, making, well, we, we threw out the idea of reopening that southern bay. Um, but V-Trans, um, thought that that would be really challenging. Or thought that it would be better to explore making a full, single opening with, with a, a greater span than, than reopening, um, that old original span.
Okay. So it would be more.
Yeah, frankly, we agreed with that idea. And the idea then would be that, um, it would be a pedestrian, a bicycle bridge, which would have a lower load rating requirement. And it would span the whole opening, you know, both openings that it used to be, um, before nineteen seventy-five. So that was an alter that we mo- modeled. We also mentioned in the last meeting, oh, the idea of overflow culverts, basically putting a bunch of the largest culverts that would fit, um, while still leaving appropriate amount of soil over the top in between the top of the culvert and the trail, what we call cover. Um, you know, basically how big of a, a round pipe or a squash pipe could we fit? And how many across there? And how, and how would that compare to, you know, the single span? And then the most extreme, um, alternative would be actually lowering the rail trail down to the floodplain grade or close to it to allow, when those floodwaters do spill out to the south, uh, what, you know, an area for them to actually pass over this, essentially what's a dam, you know, perpendicular to flow all the way across the valley.
How long does that last? We're definitely dredging it out to?
No, we're talking about taking the rail trail and, um, lowering it down, a portion of it down to the south, down to the adjacent grade, like the floodplain grade, or a little above, you know, not down into the, there's some wet ones there, for example, we would put it down in the wet one, um, or, um, and that would allow in certain, in the biggest floods, for floodwaters to actually pass over the rail trail, right? So they'd be relieved over. Um, and it would, it would relieve some of the flooding behind it instead of just backing up behind essentially a big dam.
But if we left the rail trail up at its level now and opened it all the way up to where it was before seventy-five, that would be the optimum.
In, in the place of the
Because you're taking out that levee, basically.
Yeah, so, um, let me just, I, I want to make sure I explain that way that you understood. So one alternative is to make the bridge much wider right now. Another alternative is
That's alternative two.
That's alternative two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alternative five
Is lower.
Is to actually come back a little ways from that bridge to the south and then begin to incline the trail down on a, on a grade that would still be walkable, bicycleable, et cetera. And it would taper down basically to a much lower elevation and sustain a lower elevation for a while and then go back up. So we're basically creating an overflow spillway, if you will, through that rail trail.
Oh, when that river comes up, like when Irene hit, that would go over the top.
The west.
And then would damage that rail trail walkway.
Okay, so this is, V-Trans has hesitation about that alternative because they've done this in other places in northern Vermont. It's resulted in a lot of maintenance. So what we're proposing is lowering it down to a level that doesn't get flooded, you know, every year, even every couple of years, but rather the ten-year flood level. We said bring it down to about a foot below that ten-year flood. That would allow the biggest floods to pass over and would provide some relief upstream.
Right, like that one, because it doesn't involve infrastructure for the future to have to replace. I mean, these squashed culverts and bridges, I mean,
Yeah, just open it up.
Really get to the root of the problem. The problem is that mankind, or us, whoever made a dam all the way across there.
Yeah, and right now this embankment's like, you know, almost ten feet tall from
Yes.
each side. So what we're proposing is dropping it down, I think, five or six feet, so it'll still be raised. And, and like Evan said, it won't be like every storm kind of starts to go over. It would just be larger ones that actually have an effect on some of these houses that are being flooded, um, it would kind of alleviate that and, you know, pull the plug on the bathtub essentially to, to let some of that water flow over. And from a maintenance perspective, we would design it such that, you know, you might have the top layer of fine gravel that they, that you want, um, that might get eroded away, but below that, we would kind of have something more stable and harder that would be able to be uh, a little more sustainable and stay there longer. So the maintenance upkeep wouldn't be like they're totally rebuilding the trail at least every time it does get washed away, but some maintenance might need to be done.
Will the silt and all the stuff that comes from above eventually fill it again and again? I mean, how, how would that? Isn't that maintenance that you have to worry about?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the, um, the river's probably not carrying, uh, a big enough suspended sediment load to deposit over that rail trail that's lowered. And it's happening so infrequently. See, we're talking about addressing, um, you know, floods that would happen every five to ten years or, or greater.
I live right on that river uh, upstream. Right over here by Route thirty bridge.
So where would you be lowering?
And I have seen a number of storms, even this summer, when you get the big rains that come quick overnight, and you get like five inches of water. There's an old sewer line and you have lines on the abutment. And those come up to like two lines below that sewer line. Just then Irene, it was touching the bottom of that sewer line. And we had trucks, two hundred gallon propane tanks going down the river spilling propane out as it was going. Tires, trees, cars, campers. And where'd they end up? They made that little causeway even sharper. And it went downstream by, because a lot of the debris ended up in those trees. And then what did go downstream went past what they call the legion out on Granville Street, and there's still a truck embedded in one of the trees. This is, this river does come up fast.
Flashing, yes.
It flashes. And when the ice jams break, it's like a train running down through. It's really loud and very powerful. Um, lower in the bridge, I kind of get a little nervous because I've lived on it now for most of forty years. And, uh, I think it should stay the height.
Oh, well, I don't think they're proposing lowering the bridge.
The bridge would stay in the grade to span the river. It's, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna
Yeah, I might, I might misunderstand. That might remind us.
That's my question.
Okay. So here, here's, here's the current bridge opening right here. With alternative two, we're talking about basically, see the this hatch that ends right
Right.
There? That would be hundred and fifty-foot best, single-span pedestrian bridge.
So the bridge is gonna get bigger?
The bridge would get bigger. That's alternative two.
Okay.
Now, now, forget about the bridge for a moment.
Is this on the trestle or thirty?
No, this is on the trestle. Hang on, let him, let him, because I gotta, I gotta listen. I gotta hear this, Tim. This is, he's trying to, I'm, I'm trying to see what he's go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, and then so that's alternative two focused on the bridge area. Alternative five would be, now I'm gonna come down. See this old rail spur here?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Alternative five would be just forget about the bridge for a moment. Let's say you were traveling on your bike from north to south. You went over the bridge and you kept going a little bit. Now, you're standing on top of a, a grade that's about ten to twelve feet above the adjacent flood.
I see what you're saying.
We're talking about, you would gradually come down a little hill, um, a nice, easy hill just past the bridge if you were going south until you came down and you were riding on a surface that was not that high above the adjacent floodplain, okay?
And then it would tra- gradually
It would flatten and it would pop back up to meet the grade which actually the grade of the rail trail starts to, um, the difference between the rail trail grade and the adjacent grade really drops. It gets much smaller as you get further south. It's, it's greatest up by the bridge. That makes sense, right? Because they, they were trying to span this bridge at that height above the river.
So how, how far would that be from the little trestle, this, uh, bridge that's down there?
Well, this is, the little trestle's way down here, Tim. This is that other part of the rail trail that used to be the old railroad. Yes, the river.
It would only be about four hundred feet. So it's only where this, this, um, where you see this dark shading on the plan.
This has been shortened a lot. I think it's, they're now going like right here.
Uh, no, do we?
They go here. I walked that a lot.
Yeah, that, that has not changed.
That's not changed.
So it'd be in this air, area where?
It would just have that little
Yeah, that, that full distance from the bridge to about that spur is, um, it's about a thousand feet. So over that duration of a thousand feet, we would drop it down at a mellow angle, keep it low, and then get back up to it.
Okay. And that would really help too, on all this stuff being flooded, it would just go over.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, really. Mongo understands.
Anything that would jam some of the other, other alternatives, like the squash tubes and everything, or just
Or just boot right over. I like that a lot better.
That's not bridge, though, that's
Well, the bridge is still gonna be, if, if they're gonna open it up
Oh, I know.
To a hundred and fifty feet. You're still gonna open that bridge.
Oh, it's one or the other. One or the other, yes.
I'm saying, that's a lot. That's what I'm saying.
Can you let him do this report?
Yes, yes.
Did you jump into a lot of conclusions?
I am, I am. And keep up.
So there are, Jordan just reminded me, I should touch on these other alternatives. I just mentioned them just generically, but alternative, um, three is multiple overflow culverts to the south. That's, um, pointing at those little darker rectangles. And then alternative four is a single overflow culvert to the north. Um, strategically placed, again, this would be, we're not showing the sewer on here, but it'd be just south of the sewer and strategically placed where the river bends around, right, and would have some momentum. But this would require quite a bit of grading and impact on this owner's property. Actually, there's two owners here, um, to allow those floodwaters a, a path, right, to get back to the river. So in short, though, these overflow culverts, if you think about it, the area that they have available to pass flow pales in comparison to um, a single-sprain bridge or, um, lowering the trail. So if, if our target is to allow more floodwaters to pass from east to west through this unnatural uh, line of fill, you know, a dam essentially across the valley, the more space we provide, the better. So this is essentially what, what our modeling shows.
Can you go back to the one that shows the picture of the, uh, trestle? And where the sewer line was?
Right here. And when, so Tim, was that sewer line stuck, stuck in then?
Huh?
When was that line stuck in?
Long before I own the property. Long, long time. And that sewer line, if these are my trees that I still have here, I'm not sure what year this was taken. That sewer line is down here.
Okay. Yeah, so this is mapping, uh, I appreciate you pointing that out. Um, this is mapping that we received from the DEC who took record drawings from the town. So it generally, we find it to be in the ballpark, but not, um, sometimes not precise. So
Yeah, you're very, very not precise.
You see the downward ramp in Tim's trees off of the rail trailhead, uh, going through my property for the snowmobiles? Um, that, um, it's underneath the sewer line in the picture. The sewer line's on the opposite side of that.
Yeah, the sewer line would be probably
It's well into the floodplain.
Yeah, like right through here.
Takes a sharp turn right when it goes across the rail trail. It's pretty accurate.
What about where it, where it crosses the rail trail?
And it takes a sharp turn and goes through those Christmas trees.
Well, we can, we can locate it now that we know.
But back to the, back to the opening. Best one would be number two, as you would say.
Is that what you think you would recommend? What one do you think Evan is the best choice?
Well, um, can I ask you a question? Number two, I think it was Josh. I remember had stated to me, this was a few years ago, that there's some, I don't know if it's a rule or a law, that you've got to put a bridge. Any replacement on the rail trail, it has to be a bridge that potentially would carry a train. If they ever put put the train back on.
Yeah. Yeah, so they seem to be moving away from that. Because I have also heard that in the past and now with more of these rail trails moving forward, Vtrans is putting in pedestrian bridges. Um, um, the LVRT, there's a bunch of pedestrian bridges that went up in a very similar setting. Um, and I think, I think what it comes down to is the rail always has the opportunity to seize back its corridor. But if they want to do that, they would then have to replace that bridge to make it, uh, low rated for.
Okay, so putting out a different hat, would the pedestrian bridges be able to handle a snowmobile groomer?
We would have to.
Because Vtran doesn't, yeah, they don't consider us.
Yeah.
Sure, they would consider something to maintain the rail with, like a boom, it would be similar.
That's the sort of things that during.
Well, I know you're thinking about putting a archway here in Polton, that.
Yes.
A groomer wouldn't go through.
Right.
Because Vtran.
Yeah, that would certainly be something that would be considered in the design in terms of what sort of bridge.
Cause their groomers, it's about twelve feet tall and weighs and then with the groomer, yeah, it's big.
How, we talk about this being a grant for the town flood litigation. Is this, depending on what we pick, gonna take a big difference on what's paid for, what's not paid for? Is that?
I don't know at this point. I've had some conversations with, um, some folks that, uh, at the RRPC that seemed eager to assist us with, uh, implementation. In fact, I had a conversation last week and they were, they were, they're I haven't talked numbers with them though, so I don't know.
Yeah, that makes a, nothing makes a big difference, but it makes a difference.
They they want want us to be very proactive and, uh, this is something we really need to be proactive on because, as you know, the way the storms are coming now, we are going to get flooded out seriously here. And if if we can do anything at all to at least cut it down. This, this is what we have to do. You gotta think about not just the village, but the whole town of Polton. Cause it's, it runs through the village part of it, but it runs through the town on one end and the other.
And that's, that's another que- one of the two questions that I'm concerned about is we're letting all this floodwater down to flood out the Legion area, Del Noble's been down farther to the college. That has been restricted before. We want that? I mean, that's just gonna bring the sediment down farther to make more of a mess down there.
But then again, then again, to your point, if you wanna, I'll be, um, like, like when we talk about stuff, I'll be a Paul. Do you wanna flood out the Legion? Nothing about against it or down Noble's fields, or do you wanna flood out everybody in the village of Polton?
Let's take care of the problem.
That's what we're doing.
No, we're pushing the problem downstream. How about the, uh, town gravel?
Well, this is up to the engineers.
Yeah, but how about the gravel that's running into the river right up here, the town garage? That's a lot of gravel that we're losing all the time. And it's going there.
Losing gravel out in there.
Oh, it's not being harvested like way you said.
But anyways, that would alleviate the problem.
The downstream effect is certainly something that.
We'd have to look at.
Yes, we should take into consideration for any of these alternatives. I think that's a valid point.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, regarding the, the alternate four, the lower rate rail rail trail to the floodplain grade, um, can you put that map back up?
Sure.
To show that? Because that, that will still allow some flooding from the river to a point. So the water will spread out, you know, before the rail trail. And so therefore it'll slow down the water. Yes, you'll have sediment drop out, gravel drop out. But then, like you said, in that lower section, it's like an escape room for the water. But again, by that point, it's going to be running much more slowly. So you're not gonna get the scouring. And I, but I don't know how it'll affect what's downstream, like you're saying, the Legion and stuff.
Yeah.
But it, I think it allows, especially if the ground isn't frozen, it allows the the water to seep into the soil too.
And more sediment there too.
Does any of these plans fix the original problem where the river stopped going straight and decided to take a hook? I was told it was too expensive.
No, well.
Because the problem.
Hang on, hang on, he's got, he's got.
Erosion of the abutment on the, on the southern side, because that abutment's getting eroded and eroding. And then the water's going out into the field on thirty one. Instead of being able to go straight through the bridge, it flows this way and follows the.
Understood.
Follows the land.
Yeah. So I'll address your comment because it's, it's a good one about erosion and just, um, focus on the bridge for a minute and we'll come back. That was a good comment as well about lowering.
Hang on, Patty, we're getting to you.
The trail and the skipper. So, um, lengthening the span of of the existing bridge is gonna allow water to move through that bridge at a much lower velocity, right? Because we're creating more area for that water to flow. In fact, we're predicting that the velocity would drop um, in half through there. It would go from about fourteen feet per second to about six or seven feet per second in a, in a hundred year flood. That will substantially lower the erosion potential around that bridge, which is real and noted. Opening the bridge up will also, back to your question about, um, alleviating or thinking about the the source of the problem here. Opening that bridge up will also allow sediment and ice and debris to more easily pass through the main flow path of the river, what we call the floodway, right, where most of the high velocity is moving. So the fact that the river has taken this unnatural bend, you know, because we've closed off the space, um, adequate space for it to flow through, we'd expect some of that to alleviate on its own, right? Like, it'll be better flowing, both water and things that rivers carry, sediment, wood and ice with that bigger, more natural opening, right? Um, you asked about the dredging and could some of that, you know, material be removed and make up a more efficient pathway for all those things, water, ice, debris to move through this, you know, new and bigger opening. And I, you know, while a whole scale dredging of like hundreds, thousands of feet is prob- is a nonstarter with A and R. I think if we, um, had a discussion with them about what we're doing here with this bridge and trying to renaturalize flow, there may be some opportunity there to work on a solution for, you know, removing some of that unnaturally accumulated mass of sediment that's, that's been there because of the closure of one bay of the bridge. I think there's, um,
Do you know how deep that hole is on the southern side next to the abutment?
Dude, yeah, I was, I, there was a picture of me, uh, with a rod, where was it?
Yeah, because I've stood in that hole when it's not, when it's not.
That's me in the upper right. Um, yeah, it's about nine feet deep. If you're talking about the scour, the scour pool, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, when, when the water comes back out of the hook from those through the bridge.
Yep.
That, that is pretty deep. I've been.
It's very deep.
Yeah, it's very deep, yes.
Yeah, so that's all the energy being constricted through.
But that's all the washout too. So I mean, so when I talk about the undermining of the abutment, it's not just coming across the side of it. It's coming under it too.
Yep.
Well, that's why you're saying if he opens it.
Right, but the the opening, the opening I'm speaking of with is that that section of land right there. If you go back, man. Right there where where that black check line starts right to the right where the logs are. That water does flow through there. When the water gets high and it, the river doesn't even come from the other side anymore. It just comes straight across all that ground.
Almost like it's taking its own natural course again.
Where it's supposed to go. That's what I'm saying. How hard is it just to re-open it so the river loses all its energy taking those corners?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
That's exactly.
Right, but he just said it was too expensive to do it.
No, I said it was too expensive to do it over hundreds or thousands of feet, but it prescribed it.
Yeah, because I mean, if you can, if you can increase the flow, flow going straight without taking all those turns, it loses energy over, over coming into those corners.
Who lives down south?
So. You know, we tried to capture with this, these, uh, Consumer Reports style, um, circles half. You know, both the flood mitigation and the erosion mitigation. So when you study, you know, I'd encourage the board, we don't necessarily have to make a decision, right? We can, if we can, if we want, but I'd encourage you to, you know, look at this and understand all the merits because there's substantial costs involved here and benefits. You have a partner, Vtran, that's hesitant to go with alternative four, the lowering, but could be. But could be brought along with a better understanding of, um, how that could be done in a way that's different from what they've experienced in the past.
But for for a single span, number two, pedestrian bridge, one point five to two million. Wind mass floods, that's gonna flood. There's a lot of houses in the village. That price is gonna be well with flood damage to the houses.
That's just.
You know.
You're saying turns away costs and benefits, there's over a million. Or which one is higher, the damage?
The damage would be substantially higher. Because you'd, you'd have a lot of the people on thirty one with all their houses that would. That's common. Well, a couple of years ago, when we had that really bad ice jam down here, we were thinking about, you know, how are we gonna get that ice out of there? It was, and we're gonna get that again this, this, this spring. What, what?
Two questions, but Patty had some questions that she might have wanted to ask before me.
Yeah.
No, just an observation, um, our old house was the highest on the street at one point. Where we are now, when it floods up here, our bottom field and Nobles, you, you can't get on. The water just settles right in through that area. It's quite a ways down.
Yeah, see, with opening this up, all the way, it would, it would take that away.
No, it's not. It's gonna add to it.
Send more mine away.
Sorry, where is your?
We are just past the town line.
Okay, you're, you're downstream.
The other way, the hogs, the bottom fields are down.
You see, I don't.
So one thing to consider in terms of how much water we're sending downstream is the, the Polton River itself has a lot of access to its floodplain throughout all of these you know, streets. We're looking at different areas where the, between these bridges, the water wants to open up and spread as far as it can. And then it's reconstricted and and then at a larger scale, it's doing that all the way across. Um, because this is here, we're actually losing water from this watershed to the south and it's flowing into a, a different drainage essentially that wouldn't naturally come here. Um, so again, that's an unnatural, you know, we did that as humans by putting this in, um, you know, I, I think there's still so much water that is getting into those floodplains even downstream of here that I, I think it would be a concern and when looking into how much additional water we're putting downstream. Um, but I don't think it would make, um, a drastic difference in a larger storm.
But I think all this is just a short term, like draining a bathtub, there's junk that's gonna be left when you drain the bathtub. And it'll all just gather down by Patty's, down by Nobles. Again, and it's just pushing the problem down further.
Can I ask my two questions?
Yes.
Y'all are thinking about that problem with our solution. And also I think it might be helpful for us to look at this as iterations where we solve a problem and then move on to the next problem. They just recognize that we can't have it all all at once. I don't know if this is one of those. I just, it seems like there's a back and forth between this will solve the problem as I see it. This is, this won't solve the entirety of the problem. And I just encourage us collectively to think about. Recognizing we can take multiple passes at this. Um, the, the bridge question I had, when's the, when's that due for replacement? In other words, like, this would replace it. And so how close are we to end of life for that bridge? And does that, are we taking?
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? It's like that one on thirty one, the, the trestle bridge, well, it would only, that'd be no brainer. Let's just replace it with a right bridge. If it's like the one up on Paul Road, then just replace that. We don't want, and somewhere in between is imagine where this is falling. Where, where does this fall?
Yeah. Um, we're water resource engineers, not structural engineers. Not that I don't want to fight, but, um, um, based on what we've seen of that bridge and its condition, what we've seen a lot of bridges, um, it probably has a lot of life square.
It was a crease surface.
Yeah, okay, the deck.
It was.
But the, the beams, the actual structural members still look very similar.
You can't make a case that this is all through some, that was gonna need to be happening in the first place and just kind of, okay, and so my second question is, it's a two parter. Uh, with the lowering of the rail trail, is railroads are running across that trail, right? And I, I've seen what comes off of railroads. I've walked along plenty of them. There's a lot of pollution. And I don't know at what point it gets to the point where it's not like super fun sight, but it's also like, that dirt's more expensive to get rid of than this dirt. And I'm just wondering, does that five hundred K take that into account? Um, and if not, how much additional would that put, like how much closer to parity would that bring? The low in the rail trail solution to the single span bridge solution if we ended up having to pay like special prices.
Right. That's a, that's a great question. Yeah, no, this does not account for special disposal, which is substantially more like an order magnitude, an order magnitude higher than, um, you know, disposal of gene.
So really like the no maintenance option of it, that's.
Okay, um, you did make, you did say at one point, the way that bridge is now with a hundred year flood like Irene, it's fourteen.
Just, oh, feet per second.
Feet per second going through that. And if you open it up, like number two, it drops it down to nine feet per second.
That was, yeah, it was six or seven feet.
Six to seven feet.
Yeah.
Now, how would that be downstream if it's from fourteen feet per second to six? Would that flood them out more or would it downstream or would it just run it, run down through easier?
Yeah, I don't think we'd see, um, I don't think we're talking about a peak flow rate increase of, you know, of a substantial amount increase downstream, even with allowing more water to pass through the bridge. A lot of water, you know, like, I think ninety percent.
It was like eighty. Yeah, it was eighty something at this point.
What's that? Eighty to eighty-five percent of the peak flow that comes through the Polton River passes through the bridge right now. But it's that, you know, fifteen to twenty percent that's diverted south and can't escape back over. That contributes to flooding to that neighborhood itself and backing up, you know, to this neighborhood that's on the screen here. Um, so, all that volume of water that, you know, eventually makes it over. All that volume of water that, you know, eventually makes it over. Uh well, I guess my point is we're not like having a huge, you know. We're not having like a twenty or thirty percent increase in the flow that can get through. And the peak flow, so we wouldn't even, and by the time it got down to the next. Bridge crossing and all, and what Jordan was saying, all that floodplain area where it spreads out anyways. That peak would probably get dampened, you know, through there. We could, we should certainly look at that, you know, that's that's a concern that's worth looking at.
And I think more generally, like, the the decreasing velocities through that bridge span wouldn't cause any troubles downstream.
Patty, does that help you with your concern?
No, it's just we get flooded all the time, and then when they were farming, they couldn't get on the land. Because the water just sits there.
Did it do that? Were you here in the seventies when it was open? Did it flood then too down in there? Did it flood more?
We were there when they replaced the bridge before. But it's always been farm land.
Okay, but it always has water.
And both Scott Woodbury and Dell Noble said they never got water until the last fifteen, twenty years. And now it's a yearly occurrence that they have water in the basements. Which we all know Legion flooded out what, five years ago?
That that got built in the floodplain. Yeah, it's a floodplain.
It is the floodplain.
Sounds like to me what you're saying is.
That we're pushing.
Dropping it from fourteen feet per second down to six.
That's a localized velocity decrease at the bridge. And lowering that velocity will decrease our erosion potential. And like what you're getting at with the scour around the abutments. That doesn't necessarily address the same targeted issue of upstream flooding. Because of the the tailwater and the backing up of the water. That looks at those houses and how much water is in that area. Those are kind of two different. Metrics that we look at would be like flooding potential or scour potential. So this decrease in velocity, while that is good for the bridge and the infrastructure, isn't the same. Like thumbs up to, you know, lowering the water surface and having less flooding. You know, they both have advantages and we are having an effect by by opening that bridge span, having more water go out um that is still. Having a positive effect on the flooding potential as well. Just making that dish.
Just a prayer effect like what Tim's saying right here. We've got two issues, one, this has been redirected, so it's not flowing straight anymore. Two, when you get down to where Legion Hall is. You have, you have a manmade bridge restricting the water flow there too, which is causing it to back up. Up and upstream to this bridge too.
Uh no, it it does not, just to clarify on that, it does not tailwater that far. We looked at this carefully, it does not. The effect of that bridge uh does not, is independent of this area here. It does not back up far enough to affect the hydraulics room.
Even during storms?
There's a trailer on the other side of the bridge. So so the water went through and took a camper trailer, pop-up trailer. Shoved it through the bridge like a plug, and it's on the other side of the other side of the bridge, going back around the college.
That took that bridge out. It destroyed the old bridge.
Right, I'm just saying, and it's.
And it came through underneath the trailer, that was during Irene. And that's when everything came down through here. That's the one hundred year flood.
Right, but I'm saying if that bridge had taken out last time. If we're we're trying to increase flow rate, flow rate. There's there's a couple places in in line with this that may solve the problem while the flooding back up too. Because if you give more flow through everywhere. It should be there, cuz in the summertime, there's portions of that 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 I can stand in, that the water doesn't come over my toes. Right underneath the trust. There's a sandbar right there, you can stand right there, and I can stand here.
So so what are you saying? What should we do?
No, I'm just saying is that there's gonna be something with 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 all the sediment that's powered up in the places and stuff. That can allow this thing to flow naturally, because the more it flows naturally and we can get the water through it. The less chance there is of it backing up at some point.
That's what we're.
All our bridges and all the houses.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I'm saying that that sandbar that it doesn't loop around right now is a big issue. And then there's.
We know that, that's why we're.
So again, as we move forward, looking at some. Channel manipulation to do a regrading, dredging locally right around the bridge is something that we would um. Explore with the E C and to your point that. You know, those sandbars are, they're gonna reaccumulate as soon as, you know, we'll dredge them out, they will form again.
That's gonna be maintenance on this.
The best um so- solution for the trestle. Is number two.
Correct. And I would say, as you're considering the alternatives, that bridge has um support from V Trans. And they've done this type of project in other areas. The question of the lifespan of the exist, the the remaining lifespan of the existing bridge. It's a good question and something that certainly probably would be considered by V Trans. However, if this alternative is proven to have a significant mitigation effect. Um V Trans would likely support it, go along with, you know, finding funding and cooperating town. The other hand, alternative four, five, sorry, for the rail trail lowering. It's also very effective, those are the two that kind of rise to top at your table. Um that has. Um tepid support, I would say, from our conversations, my conversations with the rail trail program manager from V Trans. She didn't rule it out, she gave us the green light to discuss it. I think V Trans would need to be brought along and help. Understand how that could be done in a way that would um alleviate their concerns about maintenance and constant, you know. Erosion.
For less maintenance and less potential super. Um uncleaner. Uh number two would be the the one that would. Would be the way to go, it looks like.
Okay, so Sarah Koki is not here, but she asked a question a minute ago, what about combinations of alternatives and? You could, I mean, you obviously wouldn't do the overflow culverts if you were lowering the rail trail grade, you wouldn't do. Um you know, and in fact. Our conclusion about the overflow culverts is it's too little and. Probably not, not worth it.
To an action, we did a. Quick analysis that you would need like seven culverts to get the same amount of flow of that. That rail trail lowering, so. Not worth doing.
So they could be, you could have, you know, have a single span bridge, or you could do it phases, you could. Lower the rail trail grade and then perhaps when the bridge, you know, reached its.
I think the single span bridge is probably the best road road to go. It sounds like you got more support from V Trans for funding. It takes out the causeway, you get better flow, goes from fourteen feet. Per second down to six.
And the other, you know, advantage of the span, the single span bridge is it it is decreasing the ice jam potential.
Very much.
As good as that is, it's not really addressing that constriction that is currently there, so.
How do you feel about it, Alan?
You're saying really, there's no one fix is gonna fix everything forever, it's not gonna happen. Right, especially with the storms, the way things are.
And and I will say, we we took an interesting step back where we modeled this um with no. Rail trail at all, totally took the rail trail out, lowered it to the floodplain elevation as if it wasn't there. Um and houses still flood to some extent, so just like a big step back of like, this is a. This is a big floodplain area. Yes, we made it worse, but it's still. It's still a floodplain, so.
Yeah, we're trying to get it.
Minimize it, but we certainly won't save the entire day with one or multiple.
Um what's the negative effect of the single span?
We're getting backing from V Trans, it sounds very good back. Alan, what do you think? Um. I think opening it up with number two would be a good way to go.
I think two or five, this depends on funding.
What would V Trans?
Bridge will be twelve feet wide.
Sorry?
Bridge would be twelve feet.
Hundred fifty foot span.
Oh, I'm sorry, wide.
Yes, uh what would it be?
I think that, yeah, we'd have to look back, we we got a generic initial.
I'm going around asking the board their their opinions. Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. I'm talking to the board right now. We're going around discussing what option we would like to.
Has to be decided tonight?
Doesn't have to.
Okay.
I'm asking the board what option they're they're considering. What are you considering? Do you think number two or five?
I could look both, like number two of the bridge, but I like the lowering a little bit, but. I think both kind of, yeah, I just think lowering is gonna be trans, I have a feeling he's right, that they're gonna have some stipulations on.
It would still gather or i- is any floating cars, trailers. Trees would still be stuck in. Any upstream because it's not open.
I agree with open, but it's gonna be that way anyways. You're saying, you're saying with two, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be that with lowering the trails, was what you're saying?
Right, number two, it would create a much larger.
It's gonna be fourteen to six, right.
Right, what is the opening there?
Seven, five.
And it would open to a hundred. So but if we did go for that. Do you think it could be straightened out? Standing west, I mean. On the east side of the bridge. Would that be part of the?
Like I said, I think uh straightening the river there. I think um. It, I think that would be a conversation we have to have with. It is a conversation we have to have with the D E C about a holistic. Approach to improving this area, including. You know, giving them, giving D E C something that they would be supportive of, which is, you know, making the. More compatible with.
Hang on a minute.
Sounds easy, just dump the dirt there and.
The ten's point, you know, we gotta have it wide enough for a snow. But that comes later. That comes in the design.
I know, that's not, another question that I had, would. An option be just to straighten the river now and leave the trestle the way it is?
Clear out the crap that's causing. And solves the problem.
In the area just upstream of the bridge? That we were saying? I don't think A and R would be very open to that. I also don't think that that. I think that I see that from a hydrology and geomorphology standpoint as a temporary.
That's the original.
No, I understand, but we're still leaving the cause of that, that's a. Uh the issue, right? We're still leaving the the cause of that.
It's trying to fix itself now with the log across it, right? And straighten the rivers back up?
Well, if we were to go in and just straighten it back up, the next storm would probably drop another couple logs there and then it would happen again. So it would be, again, a temporary fix, and then maybe one storm would go through kind of clean, but then you would see.
Well, I think these other ones are just temporary fix too.
Why fix it? So just flood it out, wait till the ice jam.
No, and fifty thousand straighten the river out. Ten times over the next two hundred years.
Okay. We don't need to decide tonight, but how soon before we need to decide?
Well, um. Paul mentioned cooperating with the RPC and a possible Vermont Emergency Management Grant. Uh we have, we'd have to get a decision from you and move toward doing what's called a benefit cost analysis using FEMA's. Formulate approach. And and then be able to submit that uh with the town's blessing in April, so. And that does take some work to do, we gotta do some more hydraulics calculations.
It probably would be a good.
So within, within. You know, if not tonight, within a couple of weeks, we'd like to know, you know, what the board's decision is.
Okay.
I think this is the time of the new.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can have a conversation with RPC if you wanted about. Competitiveness and availability of funds.
Maybe that should be the way we should go before we make a decision on two or five. Alan's point, what do you, what do you think, Paul?
I'm I'm gonna reserve comment on any of it right now. I have concerns.
Maybe we shouldn't make a decision.
Yeah, you have concerns on. How we get it?
I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Okay, well, we're gonna have to uh. Mull it over for a couple of weeks. But thank you.
That's a good decisions.
Well, we don't usually go like this, get it in the first night and go, go. That's on this page. To your point, Alan, we gotta find, find out. Give an idea how much we can.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So I hope, I hope you're not leaving first. Work of it to get a a inclusive system.
Yeah, um.
It goes, goes into that process.
Oh, um determining, once you pick something, is that what you're saying? Okay, so I think to help guide your decision, I think one possible, one step is to check in with the Regional Planning Commission. About the status of federal funding. As we know, it's been a little bit questionable. I don't know how these pots of money work, but Vermont Emergency Management has mitigation funding. Um hopefully would be free from some of that compared to other sources of funding, but checking in on that, engaging. How much money could be available in this round and. Does that influence, you know?
So should we be looking to?
Yeah, I was gonna say Sarah, Paul, Sarah would probably be the best one. So check in with RPC about the. There's been some back and forth, I know by email, but I don't.
Yeah, I had a phone call with them. Last week too, so.
So yeah, so once you pick something, then we have to do a benefit cost analysis, has to have a positive. Benefit to cost ratio, then, which is unknown yet. Yeah, and then FEMA would be supportive of it.
Okay. Try and see if we can make this happen in the next.
Just one more question. What what's the official term? For straighten out river be? To the east of the bridge, what's the proper term?
Channelizing the river?
Channelizing river to the east.
Dredging, channelizing. Channelize.
Channelizing, manipulating the chin.
Worst correction. Patty.
Just have a a concern, you know, Paul not sharing his concerns. It now becomes a very non-transparent. Business. If the town is not. Clear, I mean. So if there are concerns. I think they should be expressed, so they. Clear, I mean, so if there are concerns, I think they should be expressed and they can be discussed.
So, I, I don't wanna make uneducated comments is my concern, um, because. Uh, you know, when you make a comment, when you don't really know the answer, I think it causes more confusion. Um, to people, so, and I'm not a member of this board, I'm the town manager. Um, I just have some things that I think need clarification before I make a comment publicly. Cause I think it's um potentially reckless to say something that maybe my concern is. Not even a concern that should be had. Um, so I just think, I think it's reckless for me to say something that's not informed. It's not being, it's not being transparent in my mind, it's, it's actually saying. Something in a public forum that comes from an educated um platform. So, that's, that's why I don't wanna, I don't wanna say something that's gonna cause. We all know how. Comments can be misconstrued, but there's, there's no point saying something that they'll think I have enough knowledge to say anything about.
Thank you, Paul, I do understand where you're coming from, I guess my concern is, are there other questions that could be thrown out that maybe be answered tonight? As opposed to a couple of weeks down the road or a couple of months down the road?
I think, I, I just want more time, I know we had a lot of information from, um, I've been done up tonight and I think that I. Really think about it, so I'm okay with us at next meeting, talking about it and hopefully making a decision, we think about it.
Yeah, I'd like to find to Alan's point, that's why I like this board, there's a lot of.
Think about it.
You know, a lot of people have, works well this board, and we need to at least set some feelers out. On what potential monies we could get for this. Before we make a decision right on. Jonathan?
To your point about money, um, we have new administration, uh, a lot of stuff gets spread around all what is and isn't available. Get friends and work for the federal government that both do and do not still have their jobs and where their funding. Does this affecting this project in particular, cause a million and a half to two million certainly seems like funds the states can provide, but I know that sometimes these things are. Very specifically passed out to a particular agency to come up with that coin. Is this a federal grant for the, for the bridge or would this be a state grant, do you think? And if you don't know, do, I.
It's federal, it would be federal, um, and, um, so, just. Some of our projects have been affected as well by the um, the pre's, but. Um, but um, this, I think, this is called pre-disaster mitigation. Um, and this is funding that typically after a series of floods that a state experiences. Um, that money falls proportionally to, you know, to the proportionate to the recovery effort. There's um, there's, you know, it always on the heels of it, there's pre-disaster mitigation funds available so that. And the idea is so that FEMA isn't constantly bailing out, you know, a state. And with repairs, but rather encouraging them to think proactively about how to mitigate those, those damages in the future. So I think, I, I would consider based on what I know of the realm of funds around infrastructure and the environment. Sustainability, climate, et cetera, um, I would, my general feeling that this pot of money would be. Uh, more immune, you know, of some of that than other pots that we are working.
That's exactly the question I did not ask, thank you.
Yeah.
If FEMA still exists.
Thank you.
Okay.
Goodnight.
You too.
And I think about that, get it on the way.
All right, Paul's not here for our. Joel, do you have our road report?
Still muted, Joel. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, nice to meet you, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies, um, I'm sick and my family's sick, so I'll try to make this quick and if I have to go abruptly, please don't take it from me being rude. Um, real quick, the, the last storm, I'll try to get through this pretty quick, the last storm that we had there, uh. Over Saturday into Sunday, went um relatively smoothy, smoothly for being down a driver, uh. A couple of us are pretty sick and, and one guy was not able to come in. Uh, we started just before four and um, it took us quite a while to get through the storm, there was a fair amount of snow. Uh, but it did go rather smoothly, it was nice to see a lot of people wearing out on the road and uh we waited to salt until the storm was basically over, we're trying to. Um, keep some, not spend so much money on salt and over, overuse the salt at the same time either. Um, so. There was still a lot of people pushing snow across the road, uh, like I said in the last meeting. Uh, but if we haven't cleaned up, I don't see it as a real concern because the road's pretty ugly prior to us plowing. But after we plowed or treated the road or sanded the road, um, I would strongly advise people not to do that. Uh, you know, you start putting snow in the roadway and it causes an accident and you're, you can. You're looking at the possibility of, you know, being liable for a vehicle accident or something of that nature. Um, so I'll leave that there, uh, there is uh, a pretty good amount of snow looking in the near future here this week. And we, we haven't had a lot of accumulation until recently, so the banks are starting to build up and over the next few days. Or even couple of weeks, um, we'll be trying to work on knocking the banks around intersections back, I'm already hearing concerns. Of visibilities for uh around intersections, pulling out of blind intersections and whatnot, um, so we will be working on that. Um. We did get the wood boiler uh back up to. Operational status for the time being, uh, it needed two aquastats, this was something I had mentioned during the last meeting. Uh, and it seems to be going pretty good for the time being, um, but once winter has concluded, I'm gonna. Have somebody come during the off season and just kind of check the boiler out, cause it looks like we'll probably be in the garage for at least another winter. Um. And that's really all I've got for the time being, sorry, like I, I didn't plan on, on this being sick or anything, so I didn't really get to go through. My recent notes very well and prepare for this, so. If anybody's got any questions or concerns or happy to.
Get some rest.
Joel, did anything happen with the boom uh insurance boom crack?
Um, that's something that we're gonna talk about in the executive session.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, anybody got questions for Joel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get well.
Guys crushing it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good night, thank you.
Can, hang out for when we go into executive session. If you don't mind, or let me send you a message.
No, that's fine, I can hang in there.
Okay, you can mute yourself now.
Hi, Sarah. Community development?
Hi, everyone, um, I have just a quick update tonight too, uh. So I wanted to let the board know that we've already started planning the fourth of July and we have good news around the fireworks. We have contracted for July fourth this year, so we can have the festivities all in one day. Now, that makes everyone very happy, so I'm happy to have that back with the contractor. Um, so the only other thing I wanted to share tonight is that the site visit for the town garage feasibility study. Has been scheduled for February twenty fifth, um, I've heard from Mark who will be attending Joel, um. Potentially Paul and either Paul or I or both of us, um, I think it would make sense to have one additional select board member or someone perhaps. Identified by the select board that would be a stakeholder that is familiar with um. Site analysis, uh, you know, the, what we're looking at on the site to meet with the contractor, so.
What time, Sarah?
Um, it's scheduled for nine thirty on the twenty fifth.
Then the twenty fifth is.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Would love to do.
It's next week, I'll go.
Okay.
You wanna go?
I do, but I don't think I can, I think I gotta work, yeah.
I'll go nine thirty.
Nine, nine thirty, yeah.
Uh, we'll be meeting right at the town garage.
Okay.
Um, so that's it for uh my report for tonight. Thank you.
Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. All right, anything else, Paul, on town manager's report?
Hmm, just a couple. Um, contractual matters for executive session and um, one personal matter.
Okay. Um, so we don't have to transact any of the lawful select board business, Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission?
Me again, um, so the commissioner, there hasn't been a meeting, a commissioners meeting since the last select board meeting. But there was a uh TAC meeting that took place on the thirtieth. Um, I was sick, so unfortunately I wasn't able to attend, but um, the main focus of the agenda was regional priority projects for transportation planning. Um, with the Route thirty one bridge and the several other projects that we have kind of in the queue, um. I was not advocating for, for a big project in Pulteney, I'm not aware of another one that needs to be added to the list. Um, so I'm just kind of keeping an eye on it and uh, um, there were not any projects in the minutes that were identified either in Pulteney or in the region. Uh, most of the projects were on Route seven, uh, and Route twenty two A are the regional priorities.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Sure thing.
Right, public comments and concerns?
I just have one question, and I don't know if you'd say anything, but do, can you uh divulge what sites the town is looking at? For a potential new town garage site?
Um, that is the purpose of the study, so as we get into the uh requirements and the constraints of the existing study, we will start to analyze other potential sites. So there are not other sites that we are prepared to talk about yet. It, it is the purpose of this particular study to analyze uh other feasible sites.
Okay, thanks, Sarah.
Sure thing.
Pat, did you have a question?
I would just like the financial statements.
Oh, the, of this? Our financial statements?
No, of those items in last year's town report.
Oh, like the Little League?
Yeah.
The reports will, will be out soon.
Yes, the Little League one right there.
And there's no report from the Little League in the town report?
Last time I asked for them, um, I was told that it hasn't, I haven't got some mail. I'm asking.
He has a line item in there, doesn't he?
I just gave her the Little League report.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
That it, Patty, is that answering your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, board orders, do I hear a motion to sign the board orders?
I would make a motion to sign them.
What happened?
Oh, nothing, I guess.
Did anybody want a second?
Your second?
Yeah.
Call in favor? Anybody oppose? Motion carried. Executive session for contractual matters?
And personal matters.
And personal matters.
One B S A section three thirteen even. I mean, for general public knowledge, the third place is for breaking all potential things there, certain matters. Soon to end.
So my second one? Okay.
One B S A section three thirteen.
I can do those first, thank you.
Second it, all in favor? Any opposed? Going into executive session at seven fifty five.
Thank you, Alan.